Oh, you got your seat back, I see.
No, she always sits right next to the door.
Smart girl.
We would do it.
We start bragging on to it.
Okay, are you ready? All right. Call the meeting into order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that sounded great, thank you. Okay, we have one addition to the agenda. Let's see, what are we putting this under, new business?
Yes, sir.
So I guess it would be a 5B. And it would be USAC payment options. Okay. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, special presentations appearances, service awards, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, we have three county employees receiving a service award, we have one of those employees here with us today. Mr. White, as you make your way down, I want to invite Alicia Vines, our office on youth director, to come forward and be recognized. She is being recognized for 25 years of service to Orange County.
25 years. Congratulations. And thank you. Thank you very much.
Two other employees that are being recognized who could not be with us today, Cassie Conway, a five-year service award, so library aide, and Serena Alley, a five-year service award, office on youth, childcare teacher assistant in one of our childcare sites. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Oh, you've got, you've got some proclamations, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll step down. You have an order? Uh, the National Cyber Security Awareness Month is first.
Larry, you're gonna come up and receive this as our cybersecurity guy?
Camera hold.
Let me read this. Proclamation to declare the month of October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. If there are terms in here, I can't say you owe me. Whereas, the county board recognizes that it plays a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding, and responding to cybersecurity threats to both individual and collectively security and for security and privacy. Whereas, information systems support many sectors of Orange County's economy, including financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, education, manufacturing, utilities, healthcare, and public safety systems. Whereas, citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, and other organizations use the internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education, conducting business, and, whereas information technology is integral to teaching and learning, research, outreach, and service at educational institutions, and whereas internet users in Orange County, counties of internet users and Orange County's information technology infrastructure are under increasing threat of malicious cyber attacks, including loss of privacy through fireware and adware and financial losses from identity theft and fraud. And whereas this year's Department of Homeland Security's Stop and Think Connect National Public Awareness Campaign is aimed at increasing understanding of cybersecurity and its shared responsibility, and that all this work together to improve cybersecurity, increase and strengthen cybersecurity workforce, and secure critical infrastructure. And whereas Virginia's Cyber Security Commission has made recommendations to enhance the security of information entrusted to the Commonwealth, and directives have been issued to further secure sensitive data. And whereas Orange County supports its nation and Commonwealth in efforts to both plan and improve cyber practices to address ever-evolving threats and challenges. And whereas the Board of Supervisors prioritized the Digital Citizen Initiative, particularly in the areas of transactions, information, and security, and has recognized its role in keeping data safe. And whereas Cyber Security Awareness Month is an opportunity to address the importance of educating individuals on cyber threats and to recognize the overall value of cybersecurity. Now, therefore be it resolved on this 25th day of September 2018, that Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize the month of October, I'm almost, the month of October as Cyber Security Awareness Month, and cause this observance to the attention of all its citizens. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors encourages all citizens to embrace safe practices online and all time, and invite citizens to participate in the Department of Homeland Security's Cyber Security Initiative. Sign and seal this 25th day of September, James, everybody, Chair. You get all that done, and we're really good. I'll have a sip of coffee before I try another. Maybe that's the problem, I had one too many.
Just while you're doing that, I know Larry and his staff have been working real hard to get the organization to understand what they have to do, because the cybersecurity is only good as the users of the network, so certainly applaud his efforts, and he's getting the word out. We just came across one this afternoon that may not have gotten the word, but Larry took it as a teachable moment, and hopefully it won't happen again.
There was a new threat just announced, it was yesterday morning, that they're, they found another creative way of getting access to information. Okay.
Next is your proclamation for 4H.
Yeah. I should hand this to one of you guys to read, you probably have a better voice right now than I do, for some reason. All right, this is a proclamation to declare the week of October 7 through 13, 2018, as National 4H Week. Here's what it says, "By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of October 7 through the 13th, 2018, as National 4H Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country. Whereas 4H has 1,852 youth in Orange County become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders." It's a lot of big words, okay? Good words, confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate. Whereas 4H is delivered by the cooperative extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing through hands-on projects in important areas of health, science, agriculture, and civic engagement. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Virginia who work each day to make a positive impact on themselves and those around them. And whereas 4H, 4H's network of nearly 500,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 25th day of September 2018, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize the week of October 7 through 13, 2018, as National 4H Week in Orange County, Virginia, encourages all citizens to recognize 4H for its significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead, they need to lead for a lifetime, they need to lead. Sign and seal this 25th day of September, James, big white, Chair of the Board of Supervisors. When are you guys home?
Come over, scoot over.
Oh, that's a picture, can we, all right?
And you get behind him, so we can get everybody in the picture.
Okay. You gotta pick out your message?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Oh, oh, sorry, picture that, thanks. Great job, thank you for your help.
Okay. Next item is business spotlight, James Jacobs, owner of Lauren's Cafe. Come on up, tell us about it here.
Thank you. Hello, everyone, my name is James Jacobs, and I first wanted to thank you for this opportunity to introduce my business to you. Together with my wife, Kim Jacobs, we own a business started in May called Laura Ann's Cafe. And the vision is simply to provide a nice, comfortable place for everyone in the community to come and eat some southern-style, good old comfort food. Right now, we are offering breakfast on Friday and Saturday mornings, lunch, and then dinner. And some of our more popular selections are like our southern fried chicken, a hamburger with gravy, and specialized in some good old southern fried catfish. A little background about me and my wife, we are born and raised in Orange County, went through the school system, graduated in 1988 from Orange County, and we felt like there was an opportunity to provide something back to the community that we love, and so my wife has a passion for cooking, she's been doing it forever, she does catering, and when this opportunity became available to us, we kind of wanted to, you know, go for it and see what happens. She also does catering for meetings, we provide delivery for lunch, if you want to order lunch, we'll bring that to you. As I said, we're just happy to be here, we have about four employees right now, we're looking to expand that, and one of the things we're working on is kind of getting the word out, if I'm marketing and everything, but welcome you all to come on down and enjoy some southern comfort food at Lauren's Cafe.
What are your breakfast hours when you serve breakfast?
On Friday and Saturday, from 7:30 to 11:00, and we would love to roll that out throughout the whole week, it's just a matter of staffing up, so we can have enough people to provide service. And of course, breakfast, we have biscuits and sausage gravy and all the other traditional foods, so it's all about.
Breakfast is on.
It's just all about providing good food at a good price in a nice, comfortable environment to enjoy food.
Well, since neither one is named Laura Ann.
Oh, good point, a little backstory on that, Laura Ann is my wife's sister. And we've owned a restaurant in Fredericksburg for a number of years, and she's always wanted to be a part of the restaurant here in Orange. Unfortunately, she passed away of cancer before we had the opportunity, so we wanted to honor her and name the business Lauren's Cafe.
Good, that's nice. The food is excellent, and services as well.
Thank you very much, I mean, that's a very important, this is as important as good food, is having good service. You know, come through the door, have a seat, serve you some coffee, and just relax and enjoy some good food.
Yes, I've been there a couple times, and I'll be back again, and the food is delicious.
Fantastic, okay.
I like breakfast, so.
Yeah, I like breakfast too.
Where are you located?
We're located at 152 Carolina Street, which is directly between Orange County Recap and Advanced Auto. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, this goes on YouTube, that's why it's nice to have your location seen.
Thank you very much. Yeah, have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, Rob Hennig, Rep. and Community Services, fiscal year program plan, Mr. LeGrac.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for having me today, I'm here to present our annual plan as the Community Services Board, and also our annual plan as the local area agency on aging. I believe everybody has been given a copy of the presentation already, so I'm not going to read through the whole thing to save about three hours of time, but, and I do want to leave some time if people have any questions about us as an organization and the services that we provide to the community. On the front, I do want to point out just a little, a small change, you do see our mission statement now? Our mission statement has gone through a little bit of a revision this year, the Board of Directors and myself and senior leadership in the organization participated in a retreat to kind of reexamine the strategy of the organization. And it's a minor change, but in my opinion, it's a very significant change. Our mission statement used to say to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Planning District Number Nine. And I don't, you know, for me, one of the things that I've observed since I've been here for the last six months is we want to make sure that we are committed to all five counties that we represent, and so there was a very conscious effort with the, excuse me, with the editing of our mission statement to spell out all the five counties, and it's just our commitment to you, one of the five counties, that, you know, when we are an organization that represents the five counties, that we are charged to support, that that means we are equally in representing all those five counties, so. Just as a very quick reminder, the Community Services Boards are created by statute as a single point of entry into publicly funded mental health, developmental disability, and substance abuse services, and you can see quickly there the services that we are mandated to provide. Similarly, the Area Agency on Aging was created by federal law in 1974, and really the focus on the Area Agency on Aging is those individuals who are 60 years of age and older and at risk of isolation, institutional placement, and individuals of low income. Some of the priorities that my predecessors brought to you last year, some very quick updates in the area of substance use services, the big one along those lines is really the Revive Trainings. Revive Trainings are trainings we've provided to community members and the use of NarCam, which is the recognition and treatment of potential overdose. I think at last count, we had trained about 160 members of the community in the NarCam training. Also of significance are the opening of the outpatient-based opioid treatment program, which provides medication-assisted treatment. We do know that Medicaid-assisted treatment is a more effective treatment for the, an individual who is addicted to opioids, and that has begun being started out of our Culpeper-based Behavioral Health Clinic, and we've also expanded some services to individuals who are between the ages of 15 and 25. Also in the area of mental health services, just bring your attention to the Crisis Intervention Team Training that has been going on. Up to this point, we have trained over 150 first responders to be able to properly respond to an individual in the community who's having a behavioral health, mental health crisis, and we've trained 60 instructors to continue their training, so we can expand throughout the community. One of the other major initiatives of the past year was what we call Rapid Access. One of the concerns was that if somebody was having a behavioral health crisis, sometimes it'd take three or four months to get an appointment with a clinician. With the introduction of Rapid Access during the past year, it is a same-day triage, so that if someone is identified that they need some mental health, behavioral health, substance use support, they will be triaged on that day, and currently, we see about 55% of those individuals with a follow-up appointment with a clinician within two weeks. And our goal is to get that up to 90%. Really, the biggest factor that's preventing us from getting that is the hiring of qualified licensed clinicians, which has been a real struggle. And our services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, our Bridges, which is our day habilitation program opened in the past year, and you can read through some of those as well. And our aging and housing-based services, one of the things that I think is really kind of a great service to our community is the Virginia Insurance Counseling Assistance Program called BiCap, which is a free service for community members, where we will counsel seniors on the best Medicaid or Medicare plan to choose. And this year, in the last fiscal year, we saved people in our region $231,524.97 on their premiums through that program, not that we count the pennies, but we kind of did there. We also opened our Permanent Supported Housing Program, and currently, although it says 23, we're actually now up to 26 individuals, Permanent Supported Housing Program is a specially designed program for people who are homeless or chronically homeless and difficult to maintain stable housing, and it's a wraparound program where we provide some counseling and home supports to keep people who have been homeless in our community safely housed. In the coming year, some of the priorities that we will be focused on as an organization is the continuation of the Revive, and expansion of the Revive Trainings. We are currently in the process of obtaining our licensure to be able to increase our medic assisted treatment programs and our intensive outpatient and hospital, partial hospitalization programs. Those are very intensive, site-based programs, for example, the partial hospitalization program, it's a service for people who have completed a detox, detox program, but it's a, up to, well, it's a minimum of 25 hours a week of very intensive counseling, group work, therapy to help people stay off the drugs. We are looking to better utilize our Boxwood, which is our residential treatment program, and we've changed some of our processes to make sure that we are fully utilizing that service in the community. And we are assisting in the development and the expansion of peer-related services. Peer services are someone who self-identifies as having a substance use problem, and is proved to be a very effective means of counseling and support to others. We will be renovating and relocating our Falkir County Behavioral Health Clinic. As I said, our goal is to increase to 90% all individuals who come through the Rapid Access Program, and some other things, including trying to recruit a new psychiatrist to the area, as ours is retired. In the area of community-based services, we are also in the current process of constructing two new homes, which are called Reach Homes. Reach is a very specialized home for adults with an intellectual disability who are also suffering some sort of mental health crisis, and the goal of these homes, one home is for adults, one home is for children, but the goal of the homes is to keep people out of state institutions and give them kind of a stabilization types of program. And in the area of aging, we are looking to expand some of our Live Well Virginia programs through chronic pain management, fall prevention, walk with ease programs. And you see there, I think one that's very relevant for here is, in the coming year, develop of a capital plan for renovations of the Orange Senior Center here, which is in need of some upgrades and some repairs. And from an organizational perspective, one of the things I do bring to the board, because I do know you have one of the three members of our board that you appoint to us, their term expires at the end of this calendar year, and I believe one of the other appointees will not continue in the role of a board member after this year, is we really want to be able to comply with Virginia Code 372501, which really just talks about our board membership, having a third of the board members who are a family member or an individual who has passed, received services from the Community Service Board, and we actually fulfill that obligation. But there is also a part of the code that asks that Community Service Boards remind their appointing bodies that we do have a requirement to have one member of our Board of Directors a person who currently is receiving services, and that is something that we have historically struggled with as an organization. Also in the coming year, I'm sure you've heard significant issues around this, but as Medicaid expansion comes into play, we are working to meet our organizational demands for those changes. And the numbers change on a fairly regular basis, but the last number I heard, we're on, we're just about, we're looking about 1,200 new members of the Orange community who will be eligible for Medicaid. Here you see the number of individuals that have been served by the Community Service Board based on the nature of their disability and the service that is being provided. So for example, in the area of our outpatient clinic, for people with a mental health or behavioral health disability, we currently see 364 members, and the number below that, in the brackets, is the total number of people that are supported by the Community Services Board. So you see that 51 people have received counseling or therapy for a substance use disorder out of the 325 people that have been supported by the agency over the course of the last year. And again, you can go through, there's a couple that I'll point out, you know, 236 people from a crisis intervention perspective, you see we support 131 people with case management services, and so on and so forth. And in the Area Agency on Aging, you see that we have 62 regular members who attend our Senior Center here. We've had 113 people take advantage of the No Wrong Door service, the No Wrong Door service is just a singular point of entry that anybody in the community can call one phone number and be directed to the proper services that that family member would need to be supported. 45 people also get home delivery meals, which is nice.
Before you, do you have any sense, you touched on the Medicaid expansion matter, a couple of aside, do you have any, any sense at this point as to which programs are going to be impacted the most by those 1,200 and whatever the number was? Any, any ability to plan for that?
Yes, I think, I think for us, the biggest area are those individuals that we serve in our behavioral health clinics, we accept anybody. And the biggest impact for us will be those individuals who we are currently seeing at a very, very small rate or at no fee, because of their income levels will now become Medicaid eligible, which for us as an organization is much of a positive. And I think also for some people who might not have insurance to get into some of the other programs, I think the biggest net effect is a lot of the individuals who need service, because we serve everybody, our capacity is fairly limited, and I think the expansion of Medicaid will allow some of those individuals who might not get support and services who need it to be able to be served by the voluntary community as well.
If you're talking about additional people coming in for services, can you build, with the additional resources, can you build the additional capacity in terms of providers?
We are trying. We, we have struggled recently hiring licensed clinicians, most of our services require licensure by the clinician providing the service, and we're not unique in that avenue. So we're kind of relooking at our recruiting efforts and those types of things, but one of, there's, catch 22 for a CSB when it comes to Medicaid expansion. Because of the cost of Medicaid expansion, we know it's a 10% state and 90% federal match, the state share of that expansion is expected to be a $2 billion program for the Commonwealth, but state share that is $200 million. So to pay that $200 million, we actually received a budget reduction this year. And for this year for us, it's about $140,000 hit, next year it's $290,000. Now, the rationale around that is that we are serving people that will now become eligible for us to receive some reimbursement from. So it's a, you know, it's this idea that we will claw back the monies that the state took away from us. I think because we serve so many people at such a low or no rate, it is at times difficult for us to keep on par with voluntary provider organizations from a salary perspective of licensed clinicians. So I know it's kind of a long, circuitous route to get to your end, you know, it's, it's hopeful that when the individuals that we are serving are now able, we're able to bill those services, our revenue will increase past the cuts that we receive, which we will then allow us to be, we look at salaries to be more competitive with some of the voluntary provider organizations in the community, which will increase our capacity.
But the, but the underlying assumption is of those 1,200, whatever the number was, people that you're, that you're expecting to add, you're servicing the vast majority of those already. You just may or may not be getting paid, or at least not full payment.
Yes, now that's the total number of people who will become eligible, some of those people clearly don't receive services from us, that's the, you know.
That sounds like a very, relatively small percentage of the 1,200.
Yeah, I mean, we are the, the organization that I think a lot of those individuals, if they need services, are going to turn to for services. And, you know, as I said, you know, it's our hope that with the reimbursement coming through that we can become a little more competitive on the salary perspective for licensed clinicians. I've used this term before, but I worked with a great man once who said, "Hope is not a strategy." So we have a turtle strategy of looking at those individuals, we have identified those individuals. We have identified those individuals internally that will become Medicaid eligible. We are working on education of those individuals to make sure that there's not a delay in their enrollment. And, and we might, so we've done all those types of things. We're educating our staff to make sure that they are identifying those individuals so that we can make sure that any funding reductions that we received as an organization, the net impact is as minimal as possible. And on the backend, that we can start tooling up a little bit to, to start recouping some more of those revenues internally. And then you just see our other senior centers, so, okay. Our budget for this fiscal year is twenty-six, basically twenty-six-point-five million dollars. It's up a little over a million dollars from last year. And you can see where our money comes from. The largest share of our, our money does come from fees that we charge the individuals that we, we serve. And most of those fees would be the current people who receive Medicaid or reduced rates. And then where our money kind of is dispersed from service line, and I think most people are surprised to hear this, the largest budget item within our organization is actually to support the individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And then you can see that about nine percent of our fees from Medicaid are actually targeted for substance abuse. And again, just kind of that breakdown of where the monies come from. Where does our money go? Basically, our money goes to staff personnel, like most human service organizations. And then you see we have some equipment, health, employee health insurance and those types of things. We have about three-hundred-and-fifty full-time equivalent staff. We actually have about four-hundred staff to work for us. And then you see the breakdown of where they work from a service area within the organization. This is our, our local tax funding that we receive. So we get six dollars and sixty-nine cents per capita. We will be asking for the same six dollars and sixty-nine cents per capita in the upcoming fiscal year as well. I think your population might have changed a few people.
It went up.
I think about fifty, it was a very small number, I know, for, for, for your, for your county. And that's how you can find us on social media, Facebook and all those other types of things. Happy to answer any questions.
Explain the Narcan training that you provide to whom and, and what are the requirements with?
We will provide Narcan training to anybody who asks. And it is in a partnership with the Department of Health. It's about an hour and a half training. It is the, you know, recognition of an individual who possibly is had an overdose. Any person in Virginia can go to a pharmacy and ask for Narcan. Everybody has a prescription for it. It's a blanket prescription across the state. But through the program to the Department of Health, we'll give that prescription of Narcan free to anybody who completes the training. So if you were to go to, you know, your pharmacy here, I think whatever your copay would be, you would have to probably pay that for your Narcan. It is an hour and a half training of how to recognize and administer Narcan. One of the huge benefits of the drug is that you can't make a mistake with it. So if someone is not having, not an overdose, you really can't hurt anybody by giving it to them. So, and it just, how to recognize, how to do some vital signs, how to administer Narcan and how to get help.
So the health department actually does the training?
Well, no. We have, there's a variety of trainers. We have in-house trainers who will do the revive training. The Department of Health oversees, monitors, collaborates with us, provides, they are the ones who actually have the contract to give the Narcan away for free. And then we work with a cadre of trainers, so we have to provide the training.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Okay, consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
And new business. Ms. Braden, word of contract to standard for the hybrid disability.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item is related to something that I'm sure most of you remember a few years ago. When the state adopted the hybrid program for new V R S hires, as part of that, they made it mandatory that the locality offer a disability program for hybrid employees. And as you know, here, the hybrid employees earn paid time off and rather than annual and sick leave, and we do provide the disability for them. At the time, the state was offering a disability program and said that other providers could offer a program as long as it was basically identical to what the state was offering. V A C O worked with the standard in order to develop this program. And it was substantially cheaper than what the state had offered. It's thirty-seven cents per hundred dollars of salary to, to give this insurance. So five years ago, I think it was, the city of Harrisonburg worked with V A C O to basically procure this product so it, then it can be shared to other localities. This time, V A C O reached out to Stephanie and asked if we could sort of assist with this process. So we're basically the vehicle, we're the entity that would be procuring this product through the standard, but V A C O will be administering that. And the rates have not changed. And the contract would be for one year with four additional one-year terms.
Say again, when you say we're procuring, are we procuring beyond our employees and the, and the school employees or? Clarify that.
Okay, the contract is just for Orange County. However, the whole idea is that it's ridable for other localities.
Okay, that, okay. And do you have any sense as to how many employees we have that are in this hybrid situation at this point? I mean, is it?
I, I would think.
Dozens or hundreds, I guess, is what I'm trying to?
Yeah, it, it's definitely a growing number, but I would say maybe fifty or sixty so far. Obviously, as time goes on, it will be more and more.
This is short-term disability.
Correct.
Okay, I, I know, probably been three years ago now or longer, we, we voted to do a long-term disability, which, quite honestly, the odds of anyone using that are slim to none. Whereas short-term disability is a much more likely use. And I wasn't, obviously wasn't thinking very clearly when I supported doing the long-term instead of starting with a short-term disability. Do we have any feeling what it might cost to do the short-term across the board and possibly transition out of the long-term?
We had, we had some numbers on that at the time. And I, I, you know, I, I may be off, but I was thinking it was somewhere around thirty thousand or something to do the short-term for legacy employees. The hybrids have short and long-term. That's required. The legacy employees now just have the long-term. And at the time, the thinking was, well, because they have sick leave and they're able to accumulate that, you know, a person can accumulate enough to take care of the short-term. But, you know, we have cases all the time where people don't have enough, so.
Right, and I know typically, short-term is what people use because long-term, they usually end up either with workman's comp or something. There's a very small percentage that would use the long-term. So I, I think one of the other advantages in moving into this is that we would then have employees across the organization for paid time off rather than these different leave balances that are accrued and managed. And it, it, we are dealing practically on a daily basis with certain issues with people running out of sick leave or donated sick leave and things with legacy employees. So I, I think one of the things that we will want to revisit is this disability and whether we want to move folks to paid time off. Where it's paid time off, there's not a reason why you have it. But that's a pretty ambitious thing to start. But I think with Allison being the Human Resources Manager and certainly with, with Glenda, we can start revisiting some of these things.
That's just, I was just curious, it's the thought for the future of doing the, because the reality of it is, the short-term is truly more beneficial for the majority than the long-term is. Very small percentage. Thank you.
We could definitely, you know, start working on sort of gathering that information the next time for our renewal.
That'd be great.
Okay. So you're looking for authorization for me to sign the agreement? All right, is there a motion to?
Still moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, item five B is the USAC payment option. Are you doing, are you doing that?
Stephanie had the leaves.
Okay.
We basically went over this earlier. Because of the delay in the USAC reimbursements, in order for the contractor to continue his work, we would like authorization from the board of supervisors to actually front some of the funds that would be reimbursable for USAC. And then the agreement that the broadband authority approved earlier is our agreement between us and the vendor stating how that money comes back to us.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. All right, no, old business. Consolidate public safety facility bids.
Mr. Chairman, I think what we're going to do, because this involves investment of public dollars and negotiating contract, we'll have this item as a closing item and then come back, the representatives and contractors will be.
All right. County attorneys report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, county administrators report legislative priorities.
Chairman, members of the board, you've had under development since August, your legislative priorities for 2019. As is usual, I guess, coming with the fall, Eldon shows up for his pre, kind of preview of the 2019 General Assembly and the region's legislative priorities. So, Mr. James?
Thank you very much. It's good to be with you again. There's always something to look forward to when you come here and get to see four H and remember days when my kids were little, we had sheep in the backyard and four H camp as a volunteer, parent. And then learn about a good place to get fried chicken. Know to that one. And let me know when they start doing breakfast every day. The process, we've been through this many, many times. We, we kind of start in June, looking back at what went on in the previous session and what the key issues were and how they, things have changed. And what do we want to start look, working on for the, for the next coming session, this time, 2019? And put out first draft of the, of the platform and then do meetings such as this. I've been in front of the Rapid Hand Rapid Hand Regional Commission, in front of the George Washington Regional Commission, met with the Caroline Board, I'm here with you tonight, I'm with Falkir on Thursday. Don't always get in front of each board, some of it, somebody just picks up the phone and gives me a call with their input or, or an email or stops me at another meeting. We're working through a draft two right now. We will produce that in advance of the V A C O meeting and then get together at the regional caucus up there on that Sunday and really kind of put things in final form and then put it back out to you as a final copy very shortly after that. From the draft that you have, here's what we've been hearing, and it's been pretty consistent. The C S A issue's got to stay up near the top. You know, we, we've got to do something about the private date placement, the, the costs. And working with some others, we've done some graphic representation. And you can see that cost line is different than the program as a whole. And we're, we're working, matter of fact, we got some legislation on behalf of Stafford County through the Senate unanimously last year, got bottled up in House Appropriations. Had a meeting last week with the Vice Chairman of House Appropriations and got some of the staff from House Appropriations and Senate Finance out into the Roanoke Valley to look at some programs and some options. Matter of fact, I got a call, the Roanoke Board met and discussed some of that earlier today. And I got a call from my colleague Sue Roland on the way back from that. And Roanoke, the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors is going to actually ask their delegation to introduce legislation to give them the same type of authority that Stafford has been asking for. So this, the issue's growing, we're getting there, we're hoping this year we can, we can, we can move it a little farther. The other is that the broadband you see is down in the body, it's not up in the priorities. What I've heard at every single meeting is that's got to move up to a priority issue. We, we successfully accomplished one of the priority issues from last year, and that was the speed limit authority. So that comes off, so that gives us a little more room up in the, in the priority area. And it's been pretty unanimous that dealing with broadband, getting more access to broadband in the underserved areas is, is a priority. So we're going to be working on beefing up the, the language in that section because it becomes a priority issue and it's not just an issue statement like you see now.
But I, I'll admit to being overwhelmingly cynical on this topic. It's been talked about in general language, much like this is, even back to when I had hair. And unless there, unless there's going to be, you know, an effort to actually deploy technology or cap, or assets, I don't care if you have, inhabit as a priority. Because, you know, in efforts to enhance deployment, what is that? I would say, based on history, it is feel-good language on a good day. And I'm, I'm not picking on you.
Oh, I know you're not picking on me, huh?
I, I just, you know, are we going to stop kidding ourselves or not?
Well, you know, I, I'll, I'll say this, and, and I won't disagree with anything you said, Mr. Chairman.
That would be smart. No, I mean.
Having said that, last year.
We serve on another board and have this one.
Last year, in the budget development process, the General Assembly did increase the grant funding. So there's been some small movement. And what's different from my perspective this year is every single meeting I've been in, when I was at Rapid Hand, Rapid Hand, when I was at George Washington, when I was at Caroline, all the comments were broadband, you've got to, you've got to put more reasons why, economic development, K through twelve education.
Healthcare. Healthcare.
Healthcare, thank you. And, you know, and so.
Are there, are there any more specific things we could ask for as opposed to?
I don't think so. And the reason I don't think so is this state is fractured between ninety-five counties as to what is broadband, how do we accomplish it, how do we implement it? And is it, you know, is it cellular, is it fiber, is it this, is it that?
Is it satellite?
It, it, right, it, it's, there's.
Well, I, I actually think that in addition to that, that there's a more fundamental issue, which is, I don't know that the state has decided whether or not they have a role in this matter. The, the.
They've decided they have a role in trying to make grant funds available to help localities do public-private partnerships with, with the private providers. Because that's the way the grant program is structured.
And that's the problem with the grant.
That's the policy decision that the state has made at this point. And the, the industry keeps pressing them to take away what little bit authority you have with your broadband authority.
As well as some of the legislators.
With the, with the argument that that. With the argument that that is duplicative, and there are actually some examples where a couple broadband authorities have created that problem.
Sure.
We're not going to name names, it certainly isn't anybody here, but there are in other parts of the state and that's what we get beat up with. I think, I'll just use something I've said many times before, it's like hitting a rock with a hammer. It just doesn't make any progress and then all of a sudden it cracks. So hopefully, we just, we stay at it.
I guess my real point is that there are, and I'll use the CSA as an example, there are areas where movement has an immediate and potentially substantial impact on localities. And I would rather make and have accomplishments on a handful of areas where we can really make a difference immediately, rather than delude our efforts into a bunch of, you know, feel-good kind of language, to go back to that. It's, and it's unfortunate, but I'm concerned that we really need to take two or three rifle shots, maybe really big caliber rifles, as opposed to back this big truck up and offload whatever happens to be on it.
Well, and what you're expressing there is why your colleagues around the region asked that we change the format of the platform about four years ago, where we identified three or four priority items and then just enumerate the other items. And most of those enumerated other items are defensive, you know, don't take away people.
Screw up our taxing authorities, screw up our land use authority.
Well, and that's the one with broadband, don't take away our authorities to, you know, work toward solving this problem ourselves. That's the priority.
And that may be the thing to say is that, is that we don't need new legislation.
Yeah. Well.
That would, from our standpoint, we've got a plan and the concern is that the legislation would screw up the plan.
I will say, last year, if it had not been for not for our involvement, as well as many other jurisdictions, we'd have been in real bad shape, real bad shape, but got it beat back to the point of where it ended up. I agree with you, Mr. White, and yet at the same time, we don't want to regress.
No, I agree.
But we do have a group of private providers out there that are lobbying to put us out of business.
Now, I'll say, and this is where the wireless and broadband sometimes get a little conflated, and they do overlap, but they're also different. When we were getting beat up on that issue, I was having legislators say to me, but we need to do this because you guys are getting in the way from them serving the unserved areas. And the response was, no, no, they're not serving the unserved or underserved areas because they don't have the density to get the customer base. They need, that's where they need public-private partnership to make it work because they need public dollars to infuse it. In a conversation with one of the major providers, I and some others challenged them about misleading legislators about the serving the underserved areas, they vehemently said they weren't doing that. And my response was, I'm being told by them that message, so somebody's telling them. Well, at the end of the bill, the governor added, after much lobbying, that they've got to report back each year for the next five years of what they're doing. And, well, that was the major change, but that, does that do a whole lot? No, but it puts the issue right out in front, okay, if you're going to serve underserved, then serve underserved.
But using this tower, the 5G tower, is that you say you need it to serve underserved areas, well, you need to come back and document what you're doing to it. And we just heard from the Fiber Broadband Association, Heather, folks that don't know, they're going to do this in the NFL cities, they don't have any motivation to do it in the countryside.
And the issues, and this is a national issue, the issue is what's going on in communities like this versus what's going on in downtown Richmond or in Arlington. Arlington, they're wanting to deploy that 5G, you know, every block. Why? The primary driver there is the future of autonomous vehicles. I mean, you know, the major, you know, Ford's partnering with Google and this is where we're headed in those urban areas. Well, that's not going to happen out here. So what happens to your basic service? So that, we've got, you know, kind of two Virginias and it's a true all across the country.
Well, I think the same thing is true, if I look at the three priorities that are here, the CSA one clearly is one that we're affected by and are interested in. The other two, SmartScale and CashProffers, I guess those are issues for Orange County, but they're, maybe they're tertiary or whatever comes after tertiary level issues. So, you know, that's the other concern I have with having this list of whatever you have, 12 or 15 also RANS.
Okay.
Is that a word?
Yeah.
I think I used to know what it is. Sounds about right. You see my point?
I do.
I mean, we are not homogeneous territories, even within Region 7.
Well, of course, where we are in the CashProffer discussion is putting another tool in the local land use toolbox of impact fees in lieu of, so that localities would have the choice. And.
That's not a fantasy either, of course.
Oh, but, you know, we are the only state that has the system that we have. I mean, the CashProffer, what should I call it, Kabuki Dance, Final Day Cap, TezProffer, the way the system works is a completely unique Virginia land use tool. Mr. Chairman, members, what other adds, takeaways, suggestions, concerns?
You have our local set, I take it.
Local.
Of priorities.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any of those that they want to?
I do want to make one edit on there, there was a one at the very end and it was late in the afternoon, early evening, when I did this, the Spotsylvania Orange enabling legislation, we were successful, so that's coming out. I didn't delete that out so that.
This is for the boundary?
Yeah, so that's successful, I have that in the 2019 and we don't need to do that.
Okay, I was going to say, because I didn't think was there something else you needed to do with that.
It was late, late afternoon, early evening and I was fuzzy headed, so that was done. So that comes out, so the next time you see this, that'll be gone.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure.
Thank you.
We'll invite you back.
Hey, look, you know, we could do the same discussion with CSA, I mean, we actually had the authority to do what we're trying to get the authority to do again over 10 years ago and the legislature took it away. Why? Because of some localities were taking advantage of it and not doing it properly. They weren't providing, they were using it to save money and not provide good service. Legislature just sweepingly took it away from everybody and now, as you talk to some of the senior members, and Senator Hanger is becoming an ally on this, maybe it's time to go back. Now, in the meantime, they've created a cottage industry and it's kind of.
Well, in rural areas like this, we have to send our, you know, people to Charlottesville or Fredericksburg or wherever, you know, you're.
Richmond or D.C., Norman.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nightmare for the children, frankly.
And it's not so much Fredericksburg, you send them farther away than that because the folks at Fredericksburg are sending them to Richmond, Faison and are up to Northern Virginia.
Possibly pointing out the impact on the children may be a better tactic than the money.
Just to ask the question, would you want your child to be transported every day?
Stay in the community. No, Supervisor Frame, you are exactly correct.
And that's, you know, we're talking about taking care of our kids, that's one way to, I mean, that's a more powerful argument than money.
And that's why I would argue, an issue like the CSA, there are so many different pieces of that that really need to be carefully thought through and maybe in some cases redirected through legislation, that if you had only that as an initiative, that would be a huge win, not only for the financial side of it, but also in terms of the quality of the service and the impact on the children and the family.
Well, it's a waste of time and transportation instead of actual services.
It absolutely is, and there's also the other side is, if you relocate to a different county, you're allowed to take whatever services you were getting in County A and force County B.
To pay for it.
To pay for it. I mean, so there are just too many pieces of that to have it sort of get, you know, lost along with the 14 other priorities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll bring this back at your November meeting, remember, that's your Lake of the Woods meeting, we have one meeting that's on for your adoption. Do you have any other things you want to add, just letting me know and I'll bring it back?
Let's see how far we can get in the next two or three minutes here, because we have four public hearings. Be nice to close this out if we can. Any board comment? Any question on the information items? Okay, we have a calendar item to add a public hearing for our, what meeting? We don't say. Is there a recommended, is it on the calendar?
It's a rezoning for A&amp;K Development.
I thought I saw it on the calendar, but.
It is, October 4th.
It's up there, number.
It's.
Now, planning commission is October 4th, I mean, we're.
Right.
Do we have a suggested?
Yes, sir, the December meeting.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't have the public hearing, the logistics at Lake of the Woods Clubhouse.
So we're going to do that at the.
On December 4th.
December 4th, okay, thanks.
Which is our first and third meeting scheduled because of the holidays.
Yeah, okay, is that all right with everybody, December 4th?
Okay, fine.
Okay. All right.
It is, it's, I know that will come with the first sooner, but.
Looks like, well, that's.
But that just picks up.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions on the calendar items?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss and close meeting the following, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel specifically concerning Dulavista subdivision, town of Gordonsville, in agreement with the town of Orange, and discussion of the award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds, and discussion of term and scope of this contract, or discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body concerning the E911 building. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.2, 3711a8 and 829 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of four state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next. Very closed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you, who has the closed session? Susan, okay. Whenever you're ready.
To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. It is seven o'clock, public comment, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have one person signed up, Mr. Earl McCauley, 20071, Bo Vender Lane, Orange, Virginia.
Okay, come up.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. I guess this is working. Gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. Several months ago, I was contracted by someone who wanted to purchase a piece of property from me. I never thought that selling a piece of property would be so involved. The subdivision ordinance qualified by this board is both restrictive and a painful process, and it shouldn't be this way. The verbiage contained within this document assumes that anyone selling a piece of property is going to develop that property. That's a wrong accusation, a wrong assumption. I was first told that I would have to build a road to nowhere, to state specs, very expensive, very unnecessary, at an estimated cost of $40,000 to $50,000, not acceptable, totally not acceptable. After getting the runaround by Planning and Zoning and the County Administrator, no help was offered to ease this situation. Three weeks ago, we submitted a revision plan to Planning and Zoning. We were told by Thomas that the county would not approve the concept as presented. We then scheduled a meeting with County Administrator. He told us he could not sign off anything that was not approved by Thomas, or that he would not sign off anything that was not approved by Thomas. It's quite a runaround. One's telling me to go talk to the Administrator, Administrator tell me he's not going to do anything unless the first one approves. Quite a runaround. Put us right back where we started. I then contacted Supervisor Johnson, you are my supervisor, I know that now and I've never met you, but I'm looking forward to it. I've known Mark a long time and I can go talk to him. I went to him on the premise that common sense could prevail. After a meeting with Supervisors Johnson, White, County Administrator, and Planning and Zoning, that plan was approved, if I was willing to jump through some hoops. What came out of that meeting was exactly what I proposed two weeks earlier, the readjustment of boundary lines. It was, and I was told, no, it wouldn't pass. I proposed that two weeks earlier. Fortunately, we had enough property to accommodate the boundary that Jump Smith needed to comply with the new hoops. This morning, I checked with Planning and Zoning on confirmation and was hit with one more hoop. I was told by Thomas that I'd have to change my address of 24 years. I read through the county ordinance today as far as I could and could not find anything to validate this new hoop. I'm not changing my address of 24 years. I asked Thomas, I said, what about, what am I supposed to do, my friends, family, doctors, whatever, what am I supposed to do? You know what my answer was? That's not an answer. If this change of address is necessary, I couldn't find where it is. If it is necessary, I'm asking this board right now for an exemption to me changing my address of 24 years, if it's necessary. I'm asking for that exemption right now. You know, enough is enough. After a while, you get tired of jumping through hoops. There are so many, there are many assumptions contained within the new code that put unnecessary burdens on the seller. That needs to be revisited. I know it was a long process getting there, I didn't know the change was going on. I don't read the Orange County paper. I, well, the only reason I read the papers is for the comics and the crossword because you can't believe anything else you see in any of them. You know, I thank you for your time to listening to me. I'm just an old man vending, I'm a few months shy of 80 years old, but you know what? Don't ever equate age with stupidity. I may be old, but I'm not stupid. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Then you look good for 80.
Yeah, you do. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Just so you. I'd just like to kind of speak to the last point that Earl made, which had to do with the address. I would ask that staff get together with Mr. McCauley and discuss this. The concern that we had when we met Earl is the fact that if an ambulance, if you have a need. The, the concern that we had when we met Earl is the fact that if a ambulance, if you have a need for an ambulance, if an ambulance comes out there, they're going to be going to an address on, on Bow Bender Lane, and you don't live on Bow Bender Lane. You, you live on the, is it, what is it, is it mountain track or?
Mountain track.
Yeah, mountain track. So, if, if, if they come out and look for the Bow Bender sign and then go down Bow Bender Lane, you don't live on that road.
There is a sign up front that says Bow Bender Lane, when you turn it, there's a sign that says two zero zero seven one, there's a dot, a sign pointing you straight ahead. I have had both ambulances and fire trucks out there to my place, the roads will accommodate all of it, but you're staying on nine one one, it may come up as different.
Yeah, that was the concern, is it, because it, it looks like your driveway is actually off a mountain track, not Bow Bender, is that correct?
That driveway's been there since, well, I don't know when, it was there when we bought it, the roads were there when we bought it. Bow Bender Lane accom- accommodated that whole area. Marvin Wayne's house, my house.
Again, the concern would be if you had it, and it could be somebody who's not familiar with the area, if, if they're strictly looking for Bow Bender Lane, then they could come out, turn on Bow Bender Lane and drive down there looking for your house and not find it. They would probably find your house within a matter of minutes, but sometimes that can be a very important thing in an emergency situation. So what I would like to have is, if we could have the nine one one people and Thomas and Brian and Mr. McCauley get together on this, work it out.
There's a nine one one people sitting right there.
Yeah, so, so I really think this can be worked out, let's, let's get it done.
Really?
It's not, it's not unsolved.
It would involve sending change of address to the government, to my doctors, to my family, to my friends, how would you like to be hit with a change of address after you live where you're at for twenty four years?
No.
And I thank you for that suggestion, Mark, I will meet with staff anytime they want me to, except Thursday and Friday, because I work for the county those two days.
Okay, anyone else signed up for public comment? Okay. All right, next item, going to our public hearings for tonight.
That's, I'm sorry, seven thirty, isn't it? No, we got it going, all right, you got it, you got it, you got it.
We have four public hearings, public hearing number one is ZTA eighteen oh eight. Thomas, are you up for this one, okay?
Yes, sir. Well, good evening to the board, tonight I'll be providing a brief overview of zoning text amendment eighteen dash zero eight. This is a proposed amendment to Article two of the zoning ordinance. And it is for the permission of minor grading plans and major grading plans within the zoning ordinance. And it also tweaks a few minor site plan information requirements within the zoning ordinance. So currently under the existing zoning ordinance, if you're a property owner, and for example, you want to develop, say, a half acre of commercial property, you would be required to put forward all the required information on the minor site plan. And you couldn't break ground until that plan was approved and you got the land disturbance permit from the county. So what this would allow would be sort of a stopgap measure, where you're permitted to put forward required information for erosion control and other relevant matters, get your land disturbance permit, and then you could amend your site plan to include all the remaining information. So it's really to provide more flexibility to property owners. This zoning text amendment went through the typical process, it appeared before the planning commission as a work session item during their August second regular meeting. This is pretty important, as a result of discussion by the planning commission, they requested that the draft amendment language be altered such that major grading plans, that's disturbance over an acre, would not be permitted for properties zoned for agricultural use. And that's within the language here tonight. The planning commission took up the zoning text amendment at their September sixth regular meeting, there was no discussion from the public. After brief discussion by the commissioners, they do, or they did recommend unanimous approval to you all. And planning staff recommends approval as presented, so I'll stop there and I'm free for any questions.
Thomas, for clarification, there was language, at least on the copy I have, it was first occurrence I found was online, one twenty four. It changed the language from, this is item ten, the identification and delineation of any wetlands to language that says a current wetlands delineation, is, is that a distinction with a difference or without a difference? That, that shows up in two or three different places and I, maybe I should know the difference, but it, it seemed like an odd change to me.
Could you give me a line number?
One twenty four on the version I have, which, and I think it's the current one.
Ah, I got you.
You see that, it's, it struck the words, the identification and delineation of any, and added words to make it read a current wetlands delineation.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I, I don't know, what are we trying to achieve there?
I believe the change, so the way that I would interpret that, the former version, the identification and delineation of anything that's existing, I don't think there's a distinction, I think it was just for clarity. Tom or Brian, I don't know if you have any thoughts, but I don't believe there's a difference between it.
Or is that for the change that we got from Corps of Engineers? On delineation of, of wetlands versus.
Yeah. Really, that was flood.
Well, you could have had some past delineations as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, they might get past ones.
Yeah, that'd be the only thing I might say, somebody might try and use one that's ten years old or something, or, or there's some question as to whether it's still current. And so, I mean, that, that would be a distinction with a difference.
Well, I, I, I mean, that could be, I, I would argue that wetlands aren't things that, I mean, they're, they're a defined area, they don't typically change.
Change over time unless the definition.
Day to day.
Unless the definition through regulations changes, which may change, which is some of the.
Yeah, okay, well.
It's not my language, I'm just trying.
Yeah, I, I, it just, it caught my eye, so, okay. All right, any other questions of Thomas before we open the public hearing?
Actually, I do have one. Basically, line one eighty six, one eighty five, one eighty six, why did the, any zoning district other than the agricultural district?
I think the concern of the planning commission was that because there's so much property that's zoned for agricultural use, that that would permit, and I'm not, that that would permit a lot of development throughout the county, that maybe too much is once. That's me paraphrasing.
You technically can grade anything you want on agricultural property.
Yes.
If it's an agricultural activity.
Right now, and I'll use Spotsylvania County as an example. They're taking thirty eight hundred acres plus. It's forestry, forestry land. Cleared everything, it's not for an agricultural use, it's well known that, that it's not. I, I, I'm concerned that we do that, a farmer's going to get ginned for doing some agricultural activity on his property.
I, I've got the same question from one of the, one of the developers, engineers about why agriculture, and I was trying to think it through, we didn't get it till late Friday to get the question. And, and in thinking this thing through, if it's a bona fide agricultural activity on agricultural land, or civil culture activity, forestry uses, yeah, I think that all involves dirt turning and, and they regulated other ways and things. I think this major and minor grading plan was ability to take property that is getting ready to be developed and allow a, a, a way for the grading plans to be approved and out there actually doing the work while the development plans. So it's really getting the property ready to develop, that would presume that you've already got zoning in place. And that if you have zoning in place, then you would be out there getting ready to start the development, land development process.
And here it says that the zoning administrator may approve it. And I know of land that is being planned for commercial development that's zoned agricultural that I really believe in my heart of hearts is what a lot of this intent was for, and we're eliminating it.
Well, and I, the board's going to obviously make it, and the planning commission did this, I was trying to think through, if the scenario were a property that was in the Germana Wilderness Area, let's, let's use that as the hypothetical. And large tract, you know, several hundred acres, planned development going through the process, they have not submitted the application to have it rezoned, but have submitted a major grading plan to start the grading work and they're approved, let's say the zoning is not approved.
Right.
Then you, you've already started the land development process and that something was rezoned. I, I'm just trying to think through why this, at least as I understood it, we were trying to accelerate the land development process, but I was always assuming that it was because zoning was already in place.
Well, we've got, and it's not. It's not, that's plain and simple.
And, and the complicated, in, at least in the Germana Wilderness Area, you have lands that are being planned that are already carrying multiple zoning.
Exactly.
I know of one area where it has one piece that's commercial today, another piece that's industrial today, and another piece is ag today. And the plan is to, you know, develop pieces of all three of those, you know, as a cohesive development. So I, I agree, let's come back to this when we get to our discussion, I want to get through the public hearings, but you raise a good point to, that we need to focus on. Any other questions of Thomas before we move forward? Okay. All right, let's open the public hearing. Anyone signed up for this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Mr. Robert Bradford of Harpersville.
Okay.
And I've got a letter that I need to read you.
I just want to make clear, I am speaking for myself, as many of you know, I'm the director on Culpeper Soil and Water District for Orange County. And I sort of saw this in the paper the other day. I'm not so much against it, especially for minor grading plans, because I think the average lot owner sees the red tape as, you know, government interference, and I think, yeah, if they have good intentions to put up erosion controls, I think they have the right to get started on a house or get planned on the site work. My only concern would be for major grading plans, developers out on, yeah, our gateway entrances, which I imagine Route three is our primary area. That's going to be this zoning amendment, my address. We live on the other end of the county, so it really doesn't bother me, I don't go out that way, sorry, Lee. But.
You're invited, though.
I go, I go to Charlottesville quite a bit and I, my, my feeling is if you allow the work to get done before a proper site plan is done, you might be setting yourself up for trouble. I know there are bonds involved to get completion done and everything. But I think the county should be concerned about the look of coming into a county. And one particular, you go Brookersville, you have sheets on your right, you have graded out site plan behind sheets, site work behind sheets that's sat there for a few years. Erosion wasn't properly done, you have the freed property going down on the left, you know, or the northbound side of twenty nine. It's been there, they did the site work, what, fifteen years ago? Stripped all the topsoil off. Did a good job on the E and S aspect, you know, they did all the right things, but it sat there for five years. Basically after the millet died, denuded, until the pine tree, the Virginia pines have come in. And now it doesn't quite look so bad, but if you're opening up the counties to that kind of pre-development as far as getting site work done, I would certainly hope the supervisors would look to put restrictions in to where, you know, you had berms or undisturbed area from the roadside, the, you know, the screen, the pre-grading of large, large commercial developments, so that's, that's basically. And that's my one and only concern.
Okay, thanks, Earl.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've read a letter that was submitted from A and K Development, thank you, dear Orange County Board of Supervisors, thank you for all you're doing to make Orange County a better place to live and also have made it a business friendly environment. We at A and K Development support the amendment to the zoning ordinance, this ordinance will save everyone of, one of the most valuable element they have, that is time, based on the size of the project, this amendment can save up to several months of time, definitely money for any projects. It's great to see our elected officials are using the regulation to help a better business environment in Orange County. Regards Monsieur Asimov.
Okay. No one else signed up, okay, close the public hearing. Okay. Anyone have a comment or question, we can pick up if you like with the discussion about ag or anywhere else. I guess one of the, one of the issues I've, I've found, just to make a point, that the distinction between major and minor ma- made me sort of almost chuckle. Minor is anything less than an acre and major is anything over an acre. That, that sounds, you know.
Simplistic.
At least simplistic, I'm not quite sure how to react to it, as I, as I said. And if you look at the list of requirements for either one of the grading plans, they're, they're virtually identical. The only one that I found that the language is a little bit different is that we, we want generalized areas planned to accommodate future, future development identified in the major. All, all the other provisions are duplicative of everything else, and so I'm not sure that we're doing ourselves a great deal of favor, favor differentiating between those. Seems to me that a grading plan that takes into account all of the soil and water erosion issues and controls and bufferings and, and the like is what we're after, almost independent of what we, what we label it, so.
Well, stormwater management was the thing that got changed.
Right.
To anything over one acre.
Right.
Then you have stormwater requirements that you don't have under an acre.
Right, and, and those.
That's why I think where the break is.
Yeah, but, but we're not doing anything to affect those stormwaters, what this is, is you got to comply with the stormwater regulations.
These are site plans.
No matter what, that's right.
Have a question about the industrial park. Uh, Lee? Yes.
Oh, the one, the only one.
The, the, the one that we, the EDA has two site-ready pads on.
Well, I think that was the model that was actually being, that we were, we were looking at, is that in, in some of these areas, pads need to be readied before they can be.
Exactly.
Be planned.
Right, you have to have a minimum of a, a level three site. And that's just to let people know you're thinking about encouraging business at some point in time. Without this, we'll never get site-ready or, you know, pad-ready sites for any businesses. And, and I fully understand the concern about ag outside of the GWAP. I absolutely understand that, but once again, it comes back, it doesn't say the zoning administrator must, says that he may, he or she may approve. So hopefully, we're putting a little bit of trust.
Discretion.
Discretion as to whether a site can be graded or not. And to me, and especially the area that I represent, this is crucial, it truly is. It's for economic development in the GWAP area, where we have determined is the growth area of the county.
And even though it may not be zoned, that is what our plan says, so that's guidance for the zoning administrator as well.
Right, and by basically holding our development in that area, it should benefit the county as a whole, so that's how I look at it.
Well, basically, you're okay with that wording.
Yes, I, I would, I would like to take out the may be approved for properties within zoning, any zoning district. I would, we did close the public hearing, sir.
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
You really could strike that whole sentence from. Really, you could strike that whole sentence from on line one that begins in the middle of 185.
Yes.
And how we'd have it read?
Just deleting the.
The last sentence of that paragraph.
185 would end with plan for the proposed activities, and then you drop down to contents of plan.
Okay.
Was there one other that you had up, the, the current delineation?
I was just trying to figure out what we were asking for in terms of the one.
So you would say that he, he can, he can approve it in an agricultural district, based on his judgment?
Or a mixed district.
Or a mixed district.
The more likely it's going to be a mixed district.
But he, he can do that, and the basis for that would be, in other words, if this is a piece of agriculture with, you know, out in the boonies somewhere, not as likely as something that's already in a comp plan for.
I'm, I'm trying to think through the scenario of the zoning administrator, because I, I agree with Mr. Crozier on the ag. I mean, I, I think giving the zoning administrator discretion, discretion is, is appropriate. I think the zoning administrator would look to approve plans, either the comp plan, the Germania Wilderness Area Plan, as saying what the future land use of these parcels. And if this really is nowhere where utilities would be going, they're not in any utilities plan, it's not fronting any type of transportation network, the ability to say that this is being readied for future development gets into the area that's probably not, not approvable. So I think you would, zoning administrator being coming to look at the context of the land, the plans and so forth, and if it, if it was a stretch.
Well, maybe that's, maybe we could add that language at the end of the sentence on 185, you know, a- as, as it's compatible with the comp plan.
With approved, with approved land use plans. Is that a?
Well, another thing, I mean, if you're looking at a major grading plan that, that invokes the idea of a major subdivision or, or a major commercial project, and the rest of our language restricts that from being anywhere except for.
Right. Okay. So, so at the end of 180, 85, it would read, plan for the proposed activities, provided that they are, you know, in line with the land use designations in the comp plan or some such?
Probably a substantial conformity with the comp plan.
Okay.
Substantial conformity, that's, that's.
That works.
That's enough of a threshold.
That's how I would make my motion.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. So you, are you, you making a motion to approve with that language?
Yes, with, with that change, with the, the language just now stated.
Okay.
I would second that.
All right. And that includes the, the striking of the sentence that refers to any zoning district, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Striking anything on 185 after the word activities and striking the entirety of 186 and replacing it with.
Okay, all right.
I thought we were saying, we were adding the.
And.
Proposed activities in accordance with the comp plan.
Yes.
And.
Substantial conformity.
Okay, we have.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a.
Okay, fine.
Any further discussion on that item? Okay, your roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Okay, motion.
For the county attorneys to adopt it, land use plans, because we have the GWOP, there's also some other ones that are coming down. So, more than just the comp, the comp plan.
I think that's what we have.
Those are in the comp plan.
I just heard comp plan, I'm sorry.
I was just, I was really more focused on substantial conformity language.
Good. Got it, okay.
We're done.
All right. Public hearing number two, proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances with respect to animals running at large. Do we have any, Mr. County Attorney, you're going to lead it?
I will lead this. Mr. Chairman, if you recall, we discussed this, I think, at our last meeting. This was, this came as, as a request from the, the animal control officer at the sheriff's department. We have one property owner that we know of for sure, that basically their fences are constantly in ill repair. They allow their animals to wander on the highways, and the animal control officer has been told that, you know, the fine is cheaper than fixing the fence. So, at the request of the animal control officer, I've, I've proposed an amendment to our ordinance to increase the maximum penalty. Currently, it's $100. And, and the way it's been interpreted, it's $100, even if you have 20 cows out there or 30 cows out there. So in conformity with state law, we've redrafted this to make the maximum fine that which is in the state code, 18.211, which is currently $250, and to say that each animal deemed running at large should be considered a separate violation. What this does is it gives the animal controller some, some teeth, but lest we get too afraid, it's only after they've been notified and permit the animal to keep running at large. So, we're not going to catch the, the farmer who one time his fence breaks in a storm, because they'll be notified, and, and those, those folks are going to take care of their animals and their fence. So, in subsection C, there is that notice requirement first, and only after they receive notice and refuse to fix the problem, can they then subsequently be hit by this fine.
Okay.
Well, and, 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 and they would get a, they would get a warning each time. I mean, if the fence is down and the cows get out, they fix the fence, and then six months later, a hurricane comes through and tears the fence down again, they're going to get another.
Another one, because it's a different issue.
Right.
But if, but if they, if the animals get out and they don't fix that particular fence, then they've used up their one warning.
Okay.
Habitual offender.
Yeah. Any other questions of Tom? All right. Open the public hearing. Anybody want to sign up to speak for this one?
Yes, sir.
Close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Start again.
All right, any other discussion? All right, first, I need a, I guess this is an ordinance as well, so we need a roll call, please.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. I have zero.
Said it didn't apply like the words, because it didn't refer to dogs.
Yeah, this, this is foreign.
If it had referred to dogs, there would be standing.
Specifically, never will refer to dogs.
All right. Public hearing number three is opposed ordinance amendment dealing with the trespassing matter. County Attorney, you can lead this one as well.
I'll, I'll take this one as well, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, we discussed this at our last meeting as well. In fact, Mike LaCass was here as well. Primarily, this ordinance is designed to allow the county and/or any other business or entity in the county to designate the sheriff and his deputies as authority to tell somebody to leave a property. So, for example, if, if the, over here at McDonald's, they designate the sheriff, then if the sheriff finds people loitering out there 2:00 a.m., he's got the authority to tell them to leave, and when they don't, then he can charge them with trespassing. So, all this ordinance does, and it just comes out of state code, is it allows the county and any other entity or person to designate the sheriff's office as somebody with authority to ask trespassers to leave property.
And, and as I understand it, this requires an, an action on the part of the landowner to actually fill out a form.
Yes, they have to.
At the sheriff's office, and so it's a formal designation. It's not just, you know, a phone call.
No, it takes an affirmative action on their part, registering with the sheriff's office and authorizing this action. But, and this was recommended to us by, by the Commissar's Attorney's Office, that we have this in place.
Okay. Any other questions, Tom? All right. Open the public hearing. We have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Close the public.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye. Okay, public hearing number four, amendment to the Code of Ordinances regarding short-term rentals. Anyone, you have a lead on this one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have had under development an ordinance to require the registrational of short-term rentals of residential properties. These are known as the Airbnbs, the vacation by owners, those type of platforms. Met on September 11th, you completed development of the ordinance, and then authorized the scheduling of a public hearing this evening. I've included in your agenda package a draft ordinance along with a draft form entitled Registration for Short-Term Rentals Within Orange County. Way this process would work is the form would be completed by the owner, the owner's authorized representative, and submitted to the commissioner of revenue for registration. Once submitted, a completed form, the commissioner would then register and subject the property as a short, sub, and the subject property as a short-term rental, which is subject to the county's transient occupancy tax. Following the registration, the treasurer would receive payments from the owner, our owner's authorized representative for collection and remittance of the tax over the course of the year. The tourism manager's developed a draft pamphlet that's in your package, and she had a matter come up and couldn't be with us this evening. That's a working draft, and her, she and I worked through, they're going to get, she's going to use all of her media channels and stakeholder groups to get the word out that this registry is up and running for short-term rental business owners. And then, once we're going to do that over the course of, of the next number of weeks, commissioner and I, and Renee's here this evening, and I've also had some conversation with the treasurer, and I think the commissioner and treasurer have kind of worked out the arrangement on, on for these short-term rentals. Because we're in the midst of, of some other things with getting real estate assessment going and getting the MUNIS platform set up for the registry, I would recommend an effective date of November 1st, 2018. That's not to say if somebody presented themselves tomorrow, we would work, have a workaround with, with having them registered and start collecting this tax, because they are the ones that are collecting it and remitting it to, to the treasurer. The only other thing is, I think the ordinance, the ordinance is the way you all gentlemen left it. The form, I think we met a couple of scrivners, saw a couple of scrivners' errors and made, made those corrections. Everything else is substantially the way it was when you last considered this on September 11th.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Brian? All right. Open the public hearing. We have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have four speakers.
Okay.
The first speaker is Virginia Rocklow of 4247 Ridge Road, Barbersville.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking on behalf of our family farm. We own and operate farm stay on our property. And as a point of fact, and a correction to what was reported in the Orange County Review and what the impression you may have gotten just now, without a registry, there are those of us who've done the due diligence to find out about the transient occupancy tax and have been paying it already. So I think it's important that you know that, that people are doing that due diligence and paying the tax. When I looked at the Administrative Code of Virginia and I looked at the proposed ordinance, I saw a couple of red flags. In the Code of Virginia, I do note that Realtors and the properties they represent, I suppose, or are agent for, are exempted statewide. Agritourism is part and parcel of agriculture in the state of Virginia and the Commonwealth. And so I do want to, and, and I also read the Virginia Municipal League story and the advocacy for doing these sorts of ordinances. I do want to point out that because this kind of farm stay is part and parcel of agritourism and agriculture in the Commonwealth of Virginia, you may really want to think about, since you've already got this huge exemption for Realtors, you may want to think about what this does for agricultural entities who are trying desperately to, to avail themselves of appropriate land use, particularly in areas that have very high concentrations of conservation easements. These properties can't be parceled off and set up and run some other way. Or where the land use of the timber, cattle, et cetera, wouldn't make sense for you to do that, even if you didn't, weren't in easement. So, I also saw that, that this is considered a ministerial sort of action. I didn't really understand what that meant. What is the purpose of the registry? Is it for public safety, health and welfare? Is it to enumerate? Or is it because we're putting it in the, the tax ordinance for taxation? So, even though that is not anticipated yet, if you put it into the taxation part of the county ordinance and you call it a fee, it doesn't take long for the public, even if there is no fee right now, the introductory pricing is free. Eventually, the three-letter word fee becomes the other three-letter word tax in the minds of, of the public in the county. How that affects churches, educational institutions, nonprofits, running camps, et cetera, I don't know. I also note, because you can operate just about any kind of business in the county without a license, if the purpose here is enumeration, there's all kinds of businesses being run in the county. And so if we're trying to enumerate and then compare and capture for taxation, you know, whether it's merchants' capital or in personal property tax, or whether it's this fee, that's one thing. If it's for some other consideration, I just think you have to be careful about singling out a particular class of trade. So I think that there's some areas here around the language, and the biggest concern that I have is making sure that agricultural entities be able to pursue this business. And I understand that there's, there's no prohibition, and you're just talking about a registry. You're just talking about enumeration. But by having every single Realtor-managed property statewide exempted, you've already got Swiss cheese, so, in the enumeration. So, I do, those are the issues that, that occurred to me. You could almost read the, the Administrative Code of Virginia as a model ordinance, but I think there's still a lot of gray area in there around these terms. And so I, I would urge you to take some caution and perhaps think about whether this registry, or whatever its purpose is, be put in consideration of the competition outside the county, because yes, our competitors are in Madison County and Green County, and they're not just in Orange County. And they're not just other types of lodging. There are similar entities in other surrounding areas that are very close to where we are in Barbersville, or just across the river. So, just, you know, what is the purpose of the enumeration? Is it for taxation? Is it for public safety, health and welfare? And then also, is this registry a matter of public record? And so who's, who's able to get a hold of this? Is it, you know, so those are the questions that I have. So I just saw some cautions about some of those language, and I do want to particularly make sure that we advocate for Virginia's biggest business, and Orange County's business, business, which is agriculture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the second speaker is Mr. Jay Billy of 12256 Montford Road, Orange.
Jay Billy, as she said, I'm the owner and operator of the inn at Westwood Farm in Orange County. Have been doing it for 12 years now. And I urge you to pass this registry for the county's sake, for, for protecting all the businesses that are in the, established lodging businesses in the county, as well as actually protecting the hosts of these Airbnbs out there. A lot of them are operating and not really understanding what is at stake and the type of trouble they can get into without paying the taxes, that being transient occupancy taxes, or even business taxes, or sales tax through the state, as well as a federal income tax. When you go forth with this registry, I would recommend that you actually teach the hosts coming in on how to calculate out the transient occupancy tax. It's a minor detail, but it's, it's a violation actually across the state, where Airbnb actually puts the, you can advertise your lodging price, but then at the end, you can slap on a $50, $75 cleaning. but then at the end, you can slap on a $50, $75 cleaning fee. And Airbnb, right now, if you go to those jurisdictions where they calculate it out, they don't include the cleaning fee. Because in Virginia, if you pay for janitorial services, that is not taxed. However, the county attorney here may tell you that if the, if the condition of staying at that particular lodging facility includes a fee, such as cleaning, that is also included into the total lodging. So the tax should be, that should be included. I see this legislation, this amendment, as not any kind of red tape for hosts. Actually, it helps them become legal and so they don't run afoul of the law at some point down in the future. So I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our third speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Jack Hertz, 12460 Mayhurst Lane.
Jack North, by the way. My wife and I own and operate Mayhurst Inn at 12460 Mayhurst Lane. We've been doing it for 15 years. Over two years ago, Jay and I started our almost year-long sabbatical in Richmond to help the state legislators come up with legislation that would allow registration of Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, and all these other places. To develop and approve that legislation. We succeeded with the help of a lot of other folks and the state passed that. Who knew it would take two more years to be able to get that to filter down to the communities to be able to actually commit them to requiring registration? So my comment is, yes, let's do it, guys. It's time. It's long overdue. We certainly want to level the playing field. And to answer the young lady's question, I think it's, yes, it's a taxation issue. And it's also a health and safety issue. And if you read that article in the Orange County Review, it, it said that. So once you get people registered now, you can now inform them about all the other things that are required. They actually run a business in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So again, let's do it. Thank you.
Okay.
Our fourth speaker is Sharon Elswick, 15, excuse me, 155 West Main Street.
Hello. I'm Sharon Elswick. My husband and I run the Holiday House Bed and Breakfast on 155 West Main Street in Orange. We've been doing it for 12 years. Wanted to voice our approval and hope that you'll vote for the registration. Our opinion is, if you run a business, there's regulations on the books. You gotta abide by those regulations. The capacity to which you decide to run your business, how often are they such, is your own personal decision. But if you take money for services rendered, you are officially running a business. So we would hope that you would help us level that playing field. And please pass the registration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. A question for the county attorney was raised, there, there are several different entities that are exempted from the registration requirement.
Right.
It's my understanding that among those, real estate agents, for example, as a matter of their own, I guess I would call it code of ethics or best practices are required to, you know, not only file but pay the taxes such as the transient occupancy, as a matter of their professional responsibility. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, there's actually state law provision under the real estate licensing provision of, under professions. And real estate agents and brokers are required by law to comply with all local laws and ordinances, which would include our taxation if we had transient occupancy taxation.
Would that extend to, when you say all local requirements, would that extend to having to register those properties on our registry?
Well, they don't have, they're exempt from registering on our registry, but they're required by law to, any properties they're handling, make sure the tax is getting paid.
And if they don't, they're in violation-
If they don't, they're in violation of their license.
So they would, they would have to identify that to the commissioner of revenue.
Right. They should, they should already be, I mean, if, if, any real estate agent who's not already paying those taxes is technically running the risk of having his license revoked or her license revoked.
So anybody in that list has some type of licensure, that a condition of that licensure is that they are complying with local laws, taxation laws?
Right. I, I think, I, I'm guessing the real estate folks just said, look, we're already complying. We're required by law to comply. Don't put an extra requirement on us to register. I'm assuming that's what happened here. And so they got this exemption carved out based on the fact that they're legally already obligated to do it.
Okay. All right. So there isn't a significant, there isn't a major exemption out of this, then?
It's, it's, it's not an exemption. Basically, they're exempt because the, the General Assembly says you are already obligated under other duties that you have.
Sure.
To be aware of the taxation-
Be aware of it and properly file.
And that goes for, as I read the list, timeshares, as well as health, health department licenses. And it looks like there's also a grandfathering if there was somebody approved as either a hotel, motel, or campground.
Again, remember, this doesn't exempt them from the tax. It merely exempts them from having to put their name on the registry list.
Right. All right.
So we've, we've gone over this before and I just want to go over it again. The, the only change that we're making, the, the tax is already there. It's already due. This simply sets up a method for people who are running one of these businesses to register with the county.
Correct. There's no new taxation.
Okay. And will, will people who are already paying taxes, will they be required to register?
If they're, if they're running an Airbnb, if they're not on one of these exemption lists, then yes, they would be required-
So even though they're already paying their taxes, they would, they would still be required-
They'd still be required to go on the list. But if, but if they're already paying their taxes-
And we are, and the information that's on the list is substantially the same information.
We'll, we'll already have the information.
Okay. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm wondering. I mean, what, what is the-
I, I don't know how we'll do it procedurally, but technically, when they file, we have all the information and can add them to the list.
I think we would work through that, wouldn't have to go back through the repetitive process of actually filling out.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I would, I would, I mean, it makes no sense to walk in with a piece of paper and hand it to the commissioner. The commissioner's already got the information.
I, I don't think any, any of us intend to, for that sort of redundancy.
So would we extend that, then, to say that anyone who's already paying their taxes doesn't need to do anything?
No, they would still wind up on the list, but what, what we're saying, they wouldn't have to do, we'll just add them to the list.
And I would say that's, that's on its face evidence that they're complying with registration.
They're already on the list.
But, okay, but I think it's important to make that clear. They're, they're already on the list.
I, I would like to-
So if you're already paying the taxes, you don't need to do it.
Could, could you look at line 41 and consider extending that to include the case that Mark was just talking about? I mean, it seems to me that if, if that's our intent, we should say that's our intent.
In other words, these people are already registered.
Yeah, they're, you're-
They didn't use our handy-dandy form, but they're, they're already registered.
We should deem them to be registered, it seems to me.
Suggesting the county attorney, if we did add a line six saying, any short-term rental that has been paying taxes as the effective date of this?
Well, I wouldn't do it as an exemption. I would move it up to the previous section, the registry duty to register.
Okay.
Just add a sentence that says, "A submission of your tax payments shall be deemed registration."
Perfect.
Yeah, I like that even better. The lawyer language just takes care of the problem. And, I mean, I know there's, there's a concern that, that this may be the, the proverbial camel's nose under the, under the tent. Under the edge of the tent. Speaking for myself, this is not a camel's nose. There is no, we're going to do this now and something else next year, or we're going to, this was-
Well, I, I think if-
This is it.
Yeah, I think if once, if we say that submission for your taxes meets this registration requirement, then we're not adding any new administrative effort, work on the part of the, a part of the citizens. But if they're not submitting their taxes and they haven't registered, then they are subject to the appropriate penalties.
Well, there, there is a line, though, that says, "After the initial registration, registration shall be renewed by January 15th of each year." So we, we, we just created a conflict, I think, in the language. Maybe, maybe we need to fix that.
They're submitting their taxes on a regular basis. What do these taxes do?
They go to the general-
What, what, what is, what is the quarter, what is the-
Quarterly?
Fifteenth?
Calendar year.
Fourth quarters due at the end of January.
Yeah, I think we need to bring that line. My comment, Lee, though, had to do with, with more regulation or beyond this. There's concern, has been voiced to me by a couple of people, that this would be, this was just the first step in, in new regulations here. And what I'm saying is, as far as I know, that's not the board's intent. It's certainly not my intent to-
I think that by the education, by the education of the people who may not be paying taxes now, now if they start paying their taxes, then there's no administrative requirement for them. The idea is just to keep the administrative burden to the minimum while we still collect our revenue.
So why don't we change that January 15th to February 1st? Then they've paid their quarterly for January and the cycle will continue.
Yeah, I, I think maybe a suggestion is payment of the tax, pay, pay, payment of the tax is deemed as registration.
Well, they're actually, that they're actually concerned about.
Well, you actually have other questions on the registration form that you would want answers to as well.
Address, liability insurance.
Liability insurance as well, those questions. If you automatically just, if they're already paying their taxes and you automatically sign them up, they haven't answered any of those questions.
What?
What?
I mean, the law doesn't require liability, liability insurance, does it?
Okay. I'll address something that the rest of this board's not interested in. And I'll accept.
Do this at your peril.
However, under the questions to consider, I really don't care about the majority of these questions. But what I do care about is, are there smoke detectors that are working? Is there an exit plan posted for the people that are going to be staying there? All of the life-saving emergency things that, life safety, back to what the young lady in the back brought up, health, safety and welfare. That to me, that is the biggest crux of this entire thing, is I know, we, we had a fire here in town that fortunately the people did everything right and they still had terrible loss, but there was no life loss or major injury. They have had it in other parts of the country. And it is the last thing that I want to happen within our county, to have someone renting a vacation home from somebody and getting trapped in a house because the deadbolts are keyed deadbolts on the inside and the outside. And we've lost a life for no reason at all. So I would like to see some life safety questions asked in here. I'm not pushing for the other, but I would like to see that.
But that gets right at Mark's point, that we're now using this as a vehicle for more regulation and requirements.
I'm not asking for any more regulation or requirement. All I'm asking is that, under the questions to consider, consider the life, safety and welfare of the people that you're running to.
But then, then the people who are already paying the taxes, even an Airbnb that's already paying the taxes.
You're talking about on this handout form.
Right.
No, he's talking about the-
No, I'm talking about the handout.
Oh, on the handout?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm not trying to change the form or any regulations.
That, that's all right. I don't have a problem with that.
I just, I mean, everyone knows where I stand as far as the health, safety and wellbeing.
I don't have a problem with, with-
I would just like to see it included on that questionnaire at a very minimal.
The que, not the questionnaire, the handout.
The handout, the pamphlet.
Well, yes. It is a handout and it says, "Questions to consider."
Yes. That was the one that-
The separate piece of paper that's not part of the ordinance.
Okay. I'm okay with that. But I'm, I'm, I'm back to the not, because that, that-
I wasn't talking about the ordinance at all.
Okay.
I was talking-
And you're not talking about the form?
No, the handout. The, the educational handout is all. Our tourism manager used this as a working draft. We certainly can add, add that language to it.
Somebody, I think it was Lee, asked a question about the liability insurance. You have an answer to that?
I, I don't think for Airbnb, there's a requirement, although if, if, if you're home, you're going to have homeowner's insurance. You're going to carry it.
It's probably not covered if you're under, you're renting it out.
Well, that's true. The regular homeowner's-
Probably not covered on your homeowner's insurance. But the point is, we're trying not to add new requirements on, on the homeowner, if he's renting his out at Airbnb. If he's already paying his taxes, he doesn't need to fill out this form. He may have none of the forms filled because they're all paying their taxes.
I'll go a different route. For the people that are currently doing this, as in the agricultural or the bed and breakfasts, they already conform to all this. They, 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 they're already doing everything there. I, I know I would not want the onus of renting my house out to someone without having certification that the insurance companies, because unfortunately, whether we like it or not, the insurance companies run everything to do with businesses and homes and everything else. I would not want the liability of running one of these and not having the proper insurance.
Yeah, I agree.
But we're, but we're wondering often, and this is, this is what government does. It, he gets his nose into the tent and then it says, "Well, my nose into the tent's such a good idea. I want to get my ears under there." And pretty soon he's got the hump underneath of there. And it just goes on and on. And because all these things sound like good ideas. I mean, who can argue with, yeah, it's a good idea that people are safe. I mean, that-
And that's why-
I'm not going to stand up here and say, no, that's, that's crazy dog.
But that's why I said I would like to see it-
Oh, I don't have any problem with it. I don't have any thing for a pamphlet. I think, I think that's, I think that's good. Because some people may not, I mean, even though it seems obvious to us, some people maybe won't think, won't think, and then that'll jog your mind.
But if people, if, if Airbnbs are not paying the taxes, they need, this will, this will trigger them. If they're paying their taxes, we may not get any of these forms.
Well, that begs the question, based on their comments, they're, they're actually, I think, suggesting they don't mind filling out the form every year.
Well, but, but the thing is, by, there are also, there are existing regulations for the, for the BnBs, hotels, motels, there's existing regulations for them. We're not using this vehicle to apply those regulations to Airbnbs.
This is strictly a registry for taxation verification. That's all it is.
And if they, and if we put in the provision that the paying your taxes or registering your taxes meets the requirements of this thing, then all we have done is created an ordinance that may or may not actually need it. It'll, it'll trigger people to, to pay the taxes.
If, if they're already paying it, I'm sure that the commissioner can extract, commissioner?
Yes.
Can extract those people that we already have and mail them a registration form to say, "You're already doing this. We just need to update the records." And then anybody new will get this form.
There, there are-
Yes, no?
How would somebody new get it?
Well, if, if they reg, decide to register, they would then get the form.
Next year.
Right. But I mean, if somebody's not going to register, they're not going to register.
Understand. And when we find that out, there's a $500 fine. In addition to the back taxes.
Fill, filling out the form is a minor thing. I have land use. Do I still get my thing every year? Damn right. And I fill them out and send them back because I want the land use.
Right.
It's no different.
Well, but there are two questions on this form. Actually, three questions is the way it's put there. That, that go beyond the- That, that go beyond the question of taxation.
Yep.
One says, are you registered with the state? If not, do you have liability insurance? And you have to name the carrier.
And will you buy, buy all health and safety regulations?
And then you're, and then you're signing it. So, this is, this, this ventures, maybe not, for some people, not too far, but it does venture beyond the question of taxation.
Why are those three, why are these three questions on there?
Mr. Johnson, I was trying to recall the, the process that I think we, I think those were just as more of a, uh, an awareness question.
But they're more than awareness when you're asking someone to certify. That's, ventures into a different world.
So, when we were working through this in the work sessions, I think with Ms. Landis-Carter's pamphlet, a lot of that should you know, do you know type of questions are posed and that's a better form, a better way of doing it than on this form. Uh, now that we, we have the, the-
Now that we got that pamphlet, we don't need that. Those questions.
The, 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 the premise of this, and I've been pretty consistent about this. I think that we should allow quite a bit of leeway to people who are, who have a house that they rent out occasionally. Uh, but the premise was that it's, it, it is an unlevel playing field if these people are doing this and they're not paying taxes. Bed and breakfast, they came in, they abided by all the rules, they've gotta pay taxes. Why should somebody else be able to come in and sort of, in, in, in some sense, take advantage of, of, uh, to a certain degree, the, the, uh, the work that, the groundbreaking work that bed and breakfast did. And now they've suddenly with this new technology getting to sort of reap the benefits without paying taxes. So, this is, this is, I've always viewed this strictly as something to level the playing field so that everybody's paying taxes that they're supposed to be paying. They're already supposed to be paying. We're not leveling any new taxes, levying any new taxes. Uh, we are, we're just saying, hey, you need to make sure you do this. Now, I don't understand why they would need to, um, re-register every year. Now, if they're, if they're being sent something by the commissioner of revenue, like we get our personal property, uh, things and we have to go through and make sure we've got the same vehicles or we don't. But I, I don't understand why we make them re-register every year. That doesn't, I don't have to go in and re-register my car every year. I send VDOT some money and they're happy for another year. You know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not having to, to, uh, you know, do anything beyond that. I'm not having to remember, oh, yeah, the first of January, I have to go in and let VDOT know that I still own my car. To me, that just, I don't, that just makes a whole lot of sense.
He used to.
That's what they stopped doing. He used to have to get inspection twice a year.
Which, which wasn't a bad idea.
Well, I mean, I think you can eliminate those questions on the, on the form. Basically, the form is strictly that. And frankly, if people start paying their taxes on a regular basis, I don't expect to see a lot of these forms.
Well, I mean, hopefully we'll see a, 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 a good, a good bunch of them at first.
Initially.
Yeah.
I mean, a real estate agent advised one of my friends who lives on the lake, don't sell your house, use Airbnb. So, they're, they're, it's, it's out there.
All right. Would someone like to try to construct a motion with respect to this matter?
Uh, do we?
Uh, excuse me, one more time. I, I would point out that in the language of the ordinance itself, it says, there shall be no fee for such registration, and that's in the language.
Yes.
And the only way that could be changed is by action of this board at some subsequent matter. I, it, just, we, we've codified what your, your point was there, Mr. Johnson, about the, the-
Do, do you want to eliminate the, the, the annual submission? Mark?
Well, I, I, I thought we had agreed earlier that if you're, that if you're already paying your taxes, then you are registered.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the only ones who would, who would register would be people who have not heretofore paid taxes.
Okay.
So, it, I, I would view this as a one-time registration.
Okay.
So, line twenty-six, I think county attorney's been getting some-
Yeah, I wrote that down. And do we wanna change it January fifteenth to February first so that anybody that's, their first time of paying taxes would be that fourth quarter?
Yes.
That'd be away with after the initial registration?
But there wouldn't be anything after the initial registration.
Well, there you go. Good point.
Okay, so we're striking the end of twenty-six and all of twenty-seven.
Okay, now, what you're, now, we need a statement in there that submissions of your taxes, uh, uh, complies with this, uh, registration requirement. I thought we wanted to say that. So, people knew that if they were submitting their taxes, they didn't have to do this.
Yeah, I already got, I already got that. I already have language that payment of your taxes shall be deemed a registration pursuant to.
All right.
And did you have a motion on the form itself? Was part of your motion?
Uh, no, I, uh-
The form's not part of the ordinance.
Yeah, the, the form-
Do you wanna deal with this separately? Okay.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion to approve the ordinance as, as revised. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Is that effective November first?
Effective November first.
Thank you.
Any other questions and discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Pass this over. Okay. Thank you.
Now, on the form, if I take the sense of the board, the, the subjective que, or the questions, one and two, or the, the three there, that were, I guess, more, we can address those in the, uh, in the pamphlet. You want me to delete those from that form?
Well, if they're registered as a bed and breakfast, we, we don't need this form in the first place.
Right, I, I, I think everything above those questions are really what, are sufficient for the commissioner of the revenue.
Yeah, you could, you could de- delete all three questions.
Treat, treat the form as only taxation-related question.
And I think, I think going to, back to the, uh, you know, to the handout here, um, I mean, I agree with what Jim said about that. I think that, um, you know, some, there will be some people who haven't done this before and they're not really sure and they're, this will be very helpful to, to be sort of brought up short that, hey, these are some things, you know, you need to consider. If somebody gets injured at your, at your house, you know, do you have insurance to cover that situation?
Your homeowner's insurance doesn't.
Right.
And if you're running it out. I think Ms. Landis-Carter's efforts here is one to inform, but also these folks are having visitors come to the county and that's an opportunity to be able to, to use.
I love having visitors come to the county, but if they get injured-
You'd like them to leave and come back?
Exactly. We, we, we need to make sure-
We don't want them to wind up at the hospital.
Right, that we've done our best to protect them.
Well, and it protects the people who own the, the house too.
The house, right, that's-
A lot of, you know, a lot of times this stuff sounds good and easy, you know, it sounds like easy money, but there's a lot of details to that, you know.
That people don't realize.
There is no easy money.
It sounds too good to be true.
It is.
Okay, let's return to our regular agenda. I propose that we move in reverse order. Uh, we're at item twelve, appointments to boards, commissions and committees. I was reminded that in my haste to-
You forgot, Sergeant.
Uh, I skipped over this. So, the question is, anyone have any appointments to boards, commissions and committees? All right?
Yeah.
We have some vacancies and some timelines running there, so.
I'm looking on it.
So, we need to, uh-
I'm trying to open it here and it's, uh, uh, let's see. Okay. Allison taught me how to do this last meeting and it's no work.
I have a question. Is there a requirement on the youth commission?
I don't know the answer.
Mr. Goodman, I believe it's just, uh, ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade?
No, no.
No, no, he's talking about the commission, youth commission.
Oh, the commission, I'm sorry. Um, I-
Probably live in the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's no, there is no requirement. Any, any, anybody can serve on it.
No.
What?
Is it a requirement we have it?
Oh!
Oh, 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 sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Uh, to have the youth commission?
Yes.
I'm not, my hunch is probably not. This was a, a practice of-
I'm just, I'm just wondering why, why we actually do it. It's the one thing that you find all the time that nobody wants to do.
Why don't we, why don't we, uh, that, that, that's a good point. Why don't we, uh, why don't we see if this can maybe be turned back to, uh, to our director if, if she wants to have a, a, a group that they can be, one that she can sort of appoint people to herself and-
Yeah. What, what is the commission actually? Their responsibility is what they're doing?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember we did something like this ten years ago, but I don't remember, you know, is it one of those things we actually have to have? I've been looking for somebody for a year and nobody wants to do this.
The one I got just is moving out of the area, so.
Well, let's, let's, let's revisit that at some point.
Let me, let me have, uh, Ms. Vines work up kind of a history of it, how it came to pass.
And, 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 you know, she may know people who can, who would be interested and, and, you know, it might be three from this district and two from that district and none from the rest or whatever, but-
It turns, yeah, it turns out I have a member from, from my, uh, district that is very active and has been for a long time, so.
Well, that-
But, but that might be an outlier, yeah.
If, if I'll have her work on this and bring it back to you as a department report with, uh, with an idea of kind of the history of how we got to have the-
What functions they do?
What do they do and maybe the model going, or the, the form going forward was an advisory group that she just solicits interested folks.
Or is it a requirement from the state for something?
I, I, I don't, I, I don't, I'm, my hunch is it's not. I think this probably was a customer or some-
It's been around for a long time. It's not-
As an idea because of, of interest and now, you know, it may be on, on its out.
Well, I mean, as, as times have changed, it's, there's nobody here to do it. Everybody's running and living their life on one of these damn things.
Yeah.
And, uh-
True, yeah.
So, it's, you know, 'cause I, I have a neighbor just shortly up the street that used to work here in the county office and now works with Alicia and she can't find anybody that's interested in my district. And she's worked with Alicia, so you know who?
Right.
I, I've asked, it just, no. And we're, we're, we're coming to a point where I don't think we can fulfill the mission. So, if it's not required, I, I don't know that we keep doing it.
And I think I can find a replacement for mine because I've got a group that deals with the Lions Leos clubs in the schools and, uh, probably four or five people to deal with that. I could probably tap one of them.
Okay. Let's move to item seven A, consolidating public safety facility. Mr. Philip, you've been waiting all evening patiently for this, but you've learned a lot.
Chairman, members of the board, um, you have before you, a memo I prepared along with some attachments. We received bids for the new public safety facility. Six bids were received. All, all the bids were close enough together that gave us, uh, uh, a good feeling that the, the plans and specifications were done well and folks could understand them. Usually results in close bids. Bottom line is, uh, Edifice Solutions was the low bidder, uh, in the amount of twelve million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Staff and Lottie Wilson has. We feel like we've done our due diligence. Uh, we've reviewed everything. We've had multiple conversations with the folks at Edifice. And staff and Lottie Wilson has recommended approval of the, of the award. Randy Vaughn with Lottie Wilson is here along with, um, two folks from Edifice. Uh, Ms. London, who's the founder and CEO of the company, uh, and Mr. Killian, who's a senior project manager for the company. They're here and be glad to answer any questions that you guys may have. And the folks from Edifice may like to get up and say a few words about who they are, if you'd like to receive that.
Sure, if you'd like to introduce yourself to us and make a couple of comments, we're, be mindful of the fact that we're-
In the final stages of our meeting.
That's right. You're, you're, you're last on, on our agenda today, so.
Oh, if you hear somebody go so moo, it's all over.
We try not to leave mid-sentence, but otherwise, anyway, nice to have you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Well, we're delighted to be here. I'm Lisa London and I am the founder, as Kurt mentioned. The company's twelve years old. We're, uh, based in Maryland and do work not just around the, the Washington and Virginia Beltway, but we also do work around the world and around the country. Primarily focused on the federal government. This is our very first project, working with the county government. And it's something that we've been working hard to win, an important project like this for about two years now. It's hard to be the low bidder. You always worry, well, um, you know, did we miss something? We've been very careful with our, putting our bid together. We, uh, went through great internal due diligence as well as worked with some local subcontractors. And, uh, we're very confident that we have the right team in place. We'll be led by Michael. We have, uh, the right support in our office, which is about sixty-some people. And it's comprised of, uh, project managers, junior project managers, uh, superintendents, back office staff that includes estimating and purchasing and, and accounting and HR. And we're ready to come in and work with as many of the local subcontractors as we can. We've had a number reach out to us and we're encouraging that more do so. We're looking to hire a, we hope a superintendent who's somewhat local to the area and help to keep as many dollars in this area as possible and, and work with folks who we know, know how to do work here better than we do today so that we can all be successful together. Personally, I, I'm a licensed architect who fell in love with construction within almost forty years ago and I've, uh, been working on design, building, construction projects ever since. I, um, also have a LEAP certification, a Design Build Institute DBIA certification, CSI certification. And, uh, take this very seriously. Every project that I touch, I look at it through professional eyes and with my architectural hat on and trying to give my client the very, very most that I can for the budget and the scope and, and have everybody coming out with it being a win-win. And that's, that's kind of a little bit about us and our, our values and how we wanna approach things. And very determined to make this a successful project for everybody. Happy to answer any questions.
How, how would you characterize the role of, uh, the, the, the local superintendent over the project in, in your, in your model? How, how, describe that, that role or characterize the type of person you'd be looking for, either one of you? Because that's a, that's always a critical piece in the, as to whether or not you have a successful project, seems to me.
Mark, go ahead and then I'll, I'll jump in if you're-
Well, there's a couple of advantages. The guy's local to the area. He knows everybody. He's gonna live here. He, all the, the guy we had in mind, uh, was involved in courthouse renovation a couple of years ago. He knows all local, uh, subcontractors, knows the market, probably knows some of you folks, I would think. Who do you think's a better fit, closer, just, uh, not a lot of driving, he's not coming from out of town?
Be, be on site most days throughout the project?
Every day.
Okay.
Every day. We will have a job site trailer. Um, I'll be down here at least one day a week if, as needed as a project. We, we plan on putting up, uh, some blue ox cameras so we can actually have our eyes on it twenty-four seven. Which I do. I've, I've done projects all over the world, uh, myself, on degree in planning, construction management. Been in this business for thirty-five years.
More need for that high data rates.
Yeah. We need to run a fiber link to you. That's, that's what he said.
Yeah, so we're, I, we, we've got a good handle on it. We feel comfortable with our team. And, you know, we've got, we're scoping out the subcontractors right now. We're getting, uh, everything, everything lined up, working on our schedule. Uh, trying to improve on that. And we know how important it is to you all in the counties. Not going to, uh, allow anyone to be embarrassed or, and we're very transparent. And any questions you have or, or phone call away, we will probably come into monthly meetings here as it, as it goes and maybe give you updates if you'd like. Uh, so, this is what we do. It's our business.
So, you're the schedule enforcer? Because I know there's got to be an enforcer with the number of days.
I am the schedule enforcer yesterday. I haven't heard that way, but yes.
Oh, that, that bottom line- Well, that, that bottom line, that, that's exactly what you have to be with that schedule.
Absolutely.
And to, to speak to your question, the superintendent is ultimately responsible for day-to-day job safety, for the quality of the work that we're putting forth, and there's a tremendous amount of support from the management team and from our back office to make sure that that superintendent has decision-making authority, um, up to even a certain amount of dollars that will be determined, so that we can make sure we keep things going forward as efficiently as possible. Uh, we also know that we're getting into the wetter, colder time of the year, and, and we're ready to move forward and break ground as soon as, as possible.
I hope we're not getting into the wetter time.
I was gonna say, if it gets any wetter in the summer, we're in trouble.
We're gonna have to build stilts at some point.
We hope so, too.
Your, your local superintendent, what, what would be his relationship to the, the typical sub? I know you're gonna have all levels of subs, but, uh, you, do, do, do the subs, does he have authority over the subs, generally speaking?
Yes.
Or at least within certain budget frameworks and things like that?
All, all day-to-day authority, yes.
So if he's, if he sees something on the job that a sub is doing, he can, he can deal with it, he has the authorities to deal with it.
He's not involved in any finances or budgets.
No, 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 no.
He's, he's production, quality, and safety, not necessarily in that order.
Thanks, lastly, we have work, you send the people home the same way they came to you in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can get his total, uh, or job site authority, his response, he's the guy.
Well, welcome to Orange.
Yes, in Orange.
Delighted to be here.
There's only one problem, now that you're here, you might like it, not like it.
That's right. Can we either of you skydodge, because by the time you're done, you promptly will.
I hear there's some nice BnBs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
More than we know, apparently. Okay, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Well, we, we need a.
We need a. Yes, yes, I, I did.
Yeah, we've got, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Um, any questions for Lottie Wilson or myself, but staff's recommendation that we, I'm, we're seeking board approval to begin the contract.
Of course, I didn't ask you, I meant to, I assume that during the bidding process, we didn't have any questions or input in terms of the design that we, that are significant enough to, to be fretting over that?
No, there was, uh.
We had questions.
We had plenty of questions, but no more than typical, uh, we don't have anything that's, uh, particularly controversial or was, you know, were no major changes to the documents during the, uh, just clarif, normal clarifications and those types of things, and again, in our conversations with, uh, with Edifice, uh, during this, we vetted out that, made sure that there was, there was no questions, no big outstanding questions in their mind, that they felt like was upholding the documents that we needed to address, so we think they're gonna come up, we all know that's a construction process, but, uh, right now, as we stand here, we feel good about the documents that we produce and, uh, that, uh, the bids they've turned in is, uh, is complete.
And you obviously pencil-whipped the entire document, right?
Be careful, Waffy.
This was wag, my, we wagging my finger at him.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if we're prepared, I would recommend that you award the, uh, project to Edifice Solutions. Uh, authorize, uh, county attorney and county administrator proceed with contract, um, development and execute, and execution, and give me some, uh, give me the authority to make, uh, do all things necessary to give this action effect.
So moved, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
You have it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good work with you.
Kurt and Randy.
Yes, thank you, thank you, guys.
Ain't no further business, I recommend that we cease.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, pack up.
Alright.